Thank you and good morning. Good morning to everybody joining us. Today is Friday, this is June 14th. This is a special meeting put together for the Athletic Commission. And so we are going to, first order of business will be to take roll call. My name is Roxanna Gomucio. I am the Executive Director with the Tennessee Athletic Commission. Participating virtually is our attorney Jesse Gentry and a large portion of the meeting will be held by Jesse. If everybody can make sure to please mute yourselves and so that way when we do roll call vote, you'll unmute yourself and we will get going. And I also want to welcome those participating remotely with us, especially those on behalf of Karate Combat to answer any questions we have. We've got several members from my team participating and then our inspections through Rich Hatfield. So as far as roll call for our members, just to make sure we have quorum to proceed when I called your name. If you can, please let me know that you are here. Ben Grove?
Here.
Thank you, sir. Kristi Halbert?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Dan McGrew?
Here.
Thank you, sir. And Corey Cipola?
Here.
Thank you. That is all of our members. So we do have quorum already to proceed. Notice of this meeting for June 14th, special meeting for the Tennessee Athletic Commission. And the agenda was posted to the commission's website on June the 12th. So that met our requirements. I'm going to turn it over to Jesse to go ahead and read the statement of necessity on the record, given that we're holding a virtual meeting. Thank you, Jesse.
All right, perfect. According to Tennessee Code annotated 8-44-108B2, if a physical quorum is not present at the location of a meeting of a governing body, the governing body must file such determination of necessity, including the recitation of the facts and circumstances on which it was based with the Office of the Secretary of State, no later than two working days after the meeting. Furthermore, TCA 8-44-108A3 defines a necessity as matters to be considered by the governing body at that meeting that require timely action by the body, that physical presence by a quorum of its members is not practical within the time period, requiring the action and that participation by a quorum of the members by electronic or other means of communication is necessary. This is a special set meeting of the Tennessee Athletic Commission by Microsoft Teams to discuss items on the agenda that were posted to the commission's website. Specifically, this meeting is to consider a waiver request by Karate Combat pursuant to Tennessee Compilation of Rules and Regulations 0145-02-01 based on the commission's laws and rules. The consideration of a waiver of certain procedures for professional mixed martial arts in this special set meeting is necessary to allow the commission to make a decision on the promoter's upcoming event that is scheduled prior to the commission's next scheduled meeting on September 9th, 2024. Consideration of this waiver request in an expedited manner is necessary to ensure the commission can make a determination that protects the participants and all other affected individuals in the promoter's contest and to allow the commission to consider which requirements are applicable to this contest as Karate Combat has requested to hold a sanctioned contest in July 2024, which would require submission of applications, issuance of licenses and the training of staff before the contest in July. Meeting remotely is considered a reasonable measure to protect the safety and welfare of the participants in this contest as well as all Tennesseans, while ensuring the government business may continue in a manner that is open and accessible to the public. This meeting remains open to the public by electronic means and all commission members shall identify themselves when speaking. All votes by the commission will be by roll call. There will be a period for public comment following the commission's review of the waiver request and comments may be made verbally or written in the chat for this meeting. So that concludes our statement of necessity. I do think Roxanna, we have to have a roll call just to accept that statement of necessity.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, sir. Members by roll call vote. Ben Grove?
Here.
Kristi Halbert?
Aye.
Dan McGrew?
Aye.
And Corey Cipola?
Aye.
Thank you. All accepting the statement of necessity. Just as a brief addition to this before I turn it back over to Mr. Gentry, we have participating on the call several members from Karate Combat and out of respect for their time and yours, we're going to go ahead and with us is Rich Chow, who I've spoken to. I'm going to go ahead and Jesse, if you're okay, maybe let him do a brief statement to the commission to explain what they are doing. We of course want to welcome them to Tennessee and that way he can cover the main pieces and then Jesse will turn it back over to you to go over the waiver. So Rich, I will mute myself and if you can, please go ahead and unmute yourself and address the commission. Thank you again for joining us on such short notice.
Thank you all for coming together so quickly. Really great effort to allow us to bring the event there. Thank you for recognizing what we're trying to accomplish with Karate Combat and with the sport. We think it's a very positive thing and we're glad you see the same thing and have taken the time to come together to help us get this event squared away. Joining me today are Laura Abril and Awesome Zaidi, also representing Karate Combat. And we're just here to answer any questions and I think it would be great to present off the top some of the major differences when you, when you look at this sport. There are some elements of the sport that cross over into things that you're very familiar with from the mixed martial arts rule set and also with kickboxing. However, there are some big differences there and we hope to address those today and yeah, answer any questions you may have, make everybody feel comfortable about moving forward with this event. I will say that, you know, this isn't the first time we've had this conversation, that Karate Combat has had this conversation with a state athletic commission. Just a few weeks ago, we went through this very, you know, this exact process with the Texas Athletic Commission. This, this company has also promoted events in Florida, California. Awesome, am I missing any other jurisdictions? Oh, you're on mute. Awesome. You're on mute.
I apologize for that.
Oh, yes. Nevada as well. Yeah, Nevada as well. So hopefully there's, there's comfort in that, that this sport has been brought to other states and we've had very successful events and we look to do the same here in Tennessee. Would a good next step be to talk about perhaps some of the major differences between the Karate Combat rules and the MMA rules?
Jesse, if you're good, do you want Rich to go ahead and explain some of those and then we dive into your breakdown? The members have been sent the document based on what was previously provided to us. And so Jesse, as the attorney, has done a deeper analysis. So Jesse, your, your decision on how you want to proceed with that, the actual addressing of each of the items?
I think, I think that's fine. You know, Rich, if you want to kind of outline some, some of the differences. You know, we have, we went through both the rules that you provided or the document that you provided and then the rules from the website. I haven't looked at them with our rules and I sent some information to the commission members. So I'm not, I'm saying Dr. Halbert, is her hand raised?
Is it appropriate to ask questions now?
I think we could do it that way. I mean, if that's the easier way to do it is just to, to answer some questions or to ask questions directly. I'm fine with that.
So you mentioned, yes, this is Kristi Halbert. Thank you for, for the information thus far. I know you've got plenty more to, to present, but I did have a quick question and that was, you mentioned presenting information to, I think you said Nevada and one other, Texas maybe. In what, in what state commissions is Karate Combat currently approved?
So, yeah, so we've held events so far. I mean, obviously internationally, all over the place, but as far as the states, Florida, California, Texas, Las Vegas. Trying to see off the top of my head where else, but it's usually very easy to get it approved because essentially the sport of MMA has all this, all these rules and we're just narrowing it down. So it's a modified rule set of MMA. There's nothing that's allowed in Karate Combat that's not allowed in MMA. It's sort of a safer version because there's no elbows and different things like that. So that's why it's usually very easy to get approved. We just need to, you know, have these calls and sort of get everyone on the same page of what the modifications are. But essentially the easiest way to think about it is it's, it's very, all our rule set is inside that bubble of MMA. You know, so there's nothing new being introduced, which is why it's so easy to get it approved in places we've gone so far. If you'd like, also, I could also, just to give you a very broad sense of what the rule set is like. If in your heads, you can imagine, you know, an MMA fight, remove the submissions and remove the elbows and essentially that's Karate Combat. You know, that's pretty much it. You know, it's very, that's with very, very minute differences, but it's basically MMA without elbows and without submissions.
Yeah. And to add, add to that, I think we found, I've always found over the, the past 20 years of being involved in combat sports, it's certainly a lot more difficult to add things than it is to subtract things. And so what we've done as Awesome just said is kind of remove some rules from the existing rule set. So not looking to introduce any new rules, but, but instead have just modified it by removing some existing rules. And I think that's been, that right there has been very helpful in getting this sport sanctioned in, in some, some of the biggest states in, in our country that are putting on combat sporting events. Well, and I think unless there's any other questions, you know, just looking at some of the major differences, I think the commission should be aware of. I've kind of outlined which specific items need approval versus a waiver. The first, I think the biggest thing, when you look at Karate Combat from the difference between our rules, you know, when we'd look at MMA, we're looking at either a ring or a cage. And with Karate Combat, I guess you'll use a pit. And I did look at the, based on the website with the dimensions, with the seven meters by seven meters, that would comply with our dimensions for the requirements for a size of a ring or a cage. But I guess the, the biggest difference there, and I think our inspectors probably will, will have a little bit of a shock there if they go to an event because they'd be sitting essentially on the side of the pit there instead of on the side of a cage or a ring. But that is, I think, the biggest thing, you know, when you look at the, the difference right away and that would require a waiver of our specific rule 0145-03-02, just because it does change the, I guess, what the fighting area, I mean, not the area, but the way that it is enclosed. Can you all tell us, I guess, a little bit of what the, the material is made of for the pit? Cause I think it seems similar to what our flooring requirements are for MMA.
Oh man, I'm, I'm really good at talking about the materials and I'm not quite sure. That's, Laura, do you?
Yeah, we have.
We have Zoltan.
So he, he is, he builds our pit actually, and he's done so for over 40 events. So I'll let him talk about this.
Beautiful.
Hi, hi, it's Zoltan. So our pit is made from a metal structure covered by plywood, one inch plywood and the vault is covered by a PA foam, a 30 kg per cubic meter density foam, which is perfectly used for, for combat sports. It's two inches. And for the floor, we are using MMA mats, which is two inches thick as well.
Okay. So there's two inches of foam, then two inches of mat on top of it.
Yeah, two inches of foam on the wall and two inches the, the mats on the, on the floor. And all the walls and the floor are covered by a canvas. And we have a security door on the pit, on the pit wall, which can be opened within a second in case of any emergency situation. The stretchers and the paramedics can go in and the doctors and we can carry out the fighters if it's necessary.
Okay. Are there any questions about that from our commission members about what the pit looks like or kind of the dimensions or anything related to that? Okay. I think the next thing that, that we had on our list, we did notice. So our rules do prohibit the use of a breast protector that is found in our rule 0145-03-14. And we noticed that, you know, under Karate Combat for female fighters, that is allowed. How often are, are female fighters wearing breast protectors? Is that normal or just?
I feel like I, I, I haven't been aware that any female fighters are wearing breast protectors. I'm, I'm sorry, Zoltan, have you ever, do we have female fighters wearing breast protectors?
No.
No, I don't, I've never seen.
They usually wear sports bras and gis and, and that's it. And I don't see that. No, they usually don't. And that's not common. So.
Okay. And I just wanted to bring that up because I know the commission, we had changed that under our rules a couple of years ago to prohibit it. And we did have an event recently talked to us about where they were mandated. And then we had, you know, asked that they would make that more permissible, that they would allow it, you know, the fight, I guess the fighters have the discretion there. So we would have to waive that rule, commission members. If you all are comfortable with that, Karate Combat allows it permissible. Or if you wanted to keep it still as a prohibition and ask that they do not have their fighters wear breast protectors, I think that's something Karate Combat could consider as well.
Definitely. We don't need it on our side. So we're fine with that.
Okay. I did note that, I mean, the gloves of Karate Combat do seem a little bit different than what we see typically in MMA. I don't think we need to waive our rule on that because it doesn't look like the padding is on the fingertips. It looks like it, you know, extends, I guess, past the knuckles a little bit, but it's not on the, the fingertips. But I just want to make sure the commission members were aware that the mitts were a little bit different. I do think the next thing that does need to have a waiver though is we specifically, or I'm sorry, not a waiver, but does need approval. Karate Combat fighters wear trunks with a belt. And our rule does say that fighters could wear custom made, well, mouthpieces or other apparel approved by the commission. So I think that, you know, they're wearing the mouthpiece. We're okay with that aspect. But the other apparel that's approved by the commission, you all would just need to approve that they would be allowed to wear trunks and a belt if, if you all were okay with that. Say when, need to discuss that item? Okay.
Dan McGrew here. So all of combatants will wear trunks with any other combatants where maybe like the traditional gi pants.
So I apologize and thank you very much for clarifying because you're right. I wasn't sure if you were referring to the trunks as the gi pants. They do wear traditional gi pants with, with a belt. That's what I thought you were referring to. Is that, is that okay?
As long as the commission approves it, we're, you know, we don't have an issue with that, with our rule. So unless you all have any issues with that, I just want to make sure that the commission's aware that they're allowed to approve that. And then.
Thank you for clarifying that.
There were a couple, we looked at the fouls that are listed on the, the rules for Karate Combat. There's just some additional files of, from our list that are already in the, the rules. And specifically, you know, those are with elbows. And then, you know, since there are, I guess, ground fighting is allowed, but there's some differences there because there's no submission. So it'll, it'll be a little bit different. I think from our aspect, you know, having that additional foul, as long as the officials are aware of those, you know, our inspectors shouldn't have an issue with that. There's just some specific rules that are different than I guess we traditionally see in MMA as to when, you know, fighters are taken off of the ground and stood back up. So I think as long as the, the officials are all aware of these rules from the Karate Combat side, the commission should be able to allow those additional fouls, just approve those. And then the only other area that really needs a waiver would be how about could be decided? Since we don't have those rules for the, the sudden victory round or that additional round. And we don't have, or you know, we have got, also got that rule for the submissions, that a fight could end by submission. So can you all explain that a little bit? I mean, how, how often, I guess, or, or what's the procedures? You know, the, I would imagine the other commissions, the judges give the scorecards. And if it's a draw, you know, the, I guess the inspectors are then saying, hey, we've got a draw here and letting the official know. What does that typically look like?
So normally what happens is, you know, it's sort of our way of avoiding maybe a controversial decision or a very tight fight, want a clear winner. So if it's a split decision or a draw, there will be a sudden death round, extra round. So in a three round fight, and remember with Karate Combat, the minute differences are, for example, it's three minute rounds, right? So it's three, three minute rounds. After those three, three minute rounds, if it's judged as a split decision or a draw, we will go into a sudden death round. So that way there's a definite winner. Also, our championship fights are five, three minute rounds. So that means there would be a sixth round if by the end of the five rounds, it was a split decision or a draw. And then we'll, we'll again have our sudden death round. So we'll have a definite winner there.
Okay. And as I understand that part from the, the rule aspect, I was just wondering, what does it look like in terms of, you know, so for our procedures, you know, the judges, each round, the official picks up the scorecards, gives it to our officials. They start tallying it and, you know, our inspectors will then look at it and if they would say, hey, this is a draw or this is a split draw, I guess they're telling the official then at that point, who's then telling the judges, we need one more round. That's what that looks like. Okay.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure and to clarify there, since we haven't seen that, I know our inspectors, you know, do a great job tallying pretty quickly, but you know, they'll, they will have to be aware that they need to tell the official then that there's going to be that additional round. And that is something that the commission could approve. Do you all have any questions about that, commission members?
Dan McGrew here. Yes, I've got a couple of questions. So each one of the bouts has to be a unanimous decision, correct?
Yes, sir.
And if it is a, a draw at the, at the end of the bout and it's a draw, they won't know until the scorecards are tabulated. So what do the fighters do? Do they just stay in their corners until they get the okay that it's not a, a draw or a split decision? And they prepare them for another, another round? Is that correct?
So you're exactly right. And we actually had a situation in Mexico where, you know, it was the end of the three rounds and one of the fighters wasn't going back to his corner. He was doing backflips, celebrating and the referee was saying, hey, it might be another round. And the guy kept doing these backflips and, and eventually it was another round and he was very angry. The fighter was very upset because he did a bunch of backflips, but he had to fight a fourth round. And so yes, it's very important that, you know, we guide the fighters back to their corners, you know, but I mean, that one fighter, you know, for whatever reason didn't want to, but yes, usually they wait in their corners to get the official decision and find out if the fight's being stopped or if it's going to an extra round.
Okay. So this is something that, this is something that we would not need a waiver for, but it would need to be approved. Is that correct, Jesse?
That's correct. Because that would still comply, even, even on your title rounds, you said at the most, it's a four round or five round?
So it would be five rounds for title and then a possible sixth round if needed.
Okay. And that would comply with our rules. We would just need approval for that because typically, and essentially I guess we would approve it almost as, as if it was a sixth round. But our rule says, you know, the non-title can exceed five rounds and then title can only exceed five rounds if approved by the commission. So, you know, we would just need approval there if that is, you know, approved by the commission unless you have further questions.
I have a question. Ben Grove here. What happens if the sixth round is also a tie? Is that possible? Or is there a specific rule where there, the judges aren't allowed to call it a tie?
So with, with a 10-point must system, usually, you know, there would be a winner, a definite winner of that round. Now, the only way that that could happen, right? Obviously you guys know is like, maybe somebody commits a foul, loses a point, but they were winning the round, then it becomes, so it's really tough. And yeah, then it would be a draw. But um, that's like, that would be really, you know, small chance.
And you guys do allow split decisions as well?
Um, oh yeah. I, I know exactly what you're saying. So in the extra round, if it's still declared a split decision, yes, that's the final decision in that extra round, you know? So we only have one extra.
If it's a split decision at the end of five, does it still go to the sixth round?
Yes.
I just wanted some clarity on it because I wasn't.
No worries, no worries.
And I do think that's something that we can provide, you know, to our inspectors, just so they're aware, you know, as they're tallying that, okay, if it's a draw or it's a split, they would have to inform the official at that point. And we do have Rich Hatfield from our investigations team on the call as well and Don McCormick from investigations. So, you know, Don or Rich, if you have any further questions, you know, I want to make sure that you all have the opportunity to ask them as well. But those essentially are the areas that we would either need approval or waiver from the commission as, as presented in that outline. Are there any other questions overall from commission members, anything outside the scope of what's been provided? Maybe that you have questions about?
No, I think it's just a hybrid of kickboxing and MMA. So I think the fighting area is the only thing that's majorly different, but overall, the only reason we use, we mandate cages and rings is because that's what traditionally has been used. Like I'm not against other areas as long as they're safe.
Yeah, you know, just to add to that, you guys are going to be really shocked at how amazing that pit is as far as safety goes. Because as far as rings and cages, you know, to get the stretcher up there, you know, people are walking upstairs, downstairs. Now, you know, the pit is on the floor. There's a giant door that opens. It's much easier to maneuver, much easier to get inside and leave. And then the viewpoint as far as for judging and commission, you know, in the cage, it's hard to see the fight sometimes. I think everyone's going to have a much easier time, you know, looking in and, and it's, it's going to be a good experience for everyone. The, the pit is really amazing. Well done, Zoltan on the call, by the way, our pit maker.
Are there any other questions from commission members or our inspectors?
This is Kristi Halbert. Jesse, what's our procedure now moving forward?
We would just need a vote to approve, I guess, and I can outline the specific areas we need to approve. But approve the use of Karate Combat's rules as it relates to scoring, fouls, results and their procedures for rounds, as well as, are you all planning on bringing a title, any type of title fights here on, in the July? Yes. Okay. So the approval of those titles potentially go into a sixth round. And then a waiver of our specific rules related to the fighting area, 0145-03-02. I said, and then, I'm sorry, an approval also of the rule related to apparel, which is 0145-03-14. So really it's only a waiver of the fighting area. Did you all, it sounds like we don't need to waive the breast protection. It sounds like that's kind of a moot issue that that's in the rules, but they, you know, aren't necessarily requesting that rule be waived. So really it's only a waiver of using the specific pit and then approval of those other rules. So if that is approved by the commission, I think you can just make a, someone could make a motion to waive that specific rule related to the fighting area to allow Karate Combat's pit design and then approve their other rules as it relates to rounds, apparel, fouls, scoring and results.
This is Kristi Halbert. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. I apologize. I couldn't unmute myself. We have a motion by Kristi Halbert and a second by Corey Cipola to go ahead and approve the waiver for the pit design. And then separate from the waiver, we would be approving the rules that they follow regarding the rounds, the fouls, the apparel, scoring and results, correct Jesse? I don't think I missed anything else. So by roll call vote to move forward with the items previously mentioned. Ben Grove?
Hi.
Thank you. Kristi Halbert?
Aye.
Thank you. Dan McGrew?
Aye.
Thank you. And Corey Cipola?
Aye.
Thank you. I think that takes care of addressing all the items. I want to thank Aseem and of course Rich and everybody on your team in April and our pit designer. It, it, this was very informative. I greatly appreciate that the commission members have asked all their questions. Just, just as a quick, quick wrap up, I want to make sure Rich Hatfield and, and Don, our team from inspections, did you have any lingering questions by any chance that maybe we didn't address?
No, we've covered everything we need to know here and probably give to y'all later. So.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. Jesse, do you? Um, Jesse, do you think we've missed anything?
I don't think so. I was curious. I mean, this isn't necessarily related to uh, you know, any of the waivers, but do you all typically use the same officials for every event? Are they, you know, traveling with your fighters?
So we we have um a a few referees that um we bring around with us and Zoltan usually organizes that. So it's usually Mike Beltran and Mark Goddard. Um, but Zoltan, do we have that for this event?
We do have Mike Mike Beltran and we will have Tommy Santana, both of them from uh the US and both of them are experienced Karate Combat referees.
Okay, great. Do you all bring the same medical staff in each state?
No, that changes based on the state.
I was just curious to see if it was gonna be a different doctor coming or or anything like that, but uh, well, we look forward to, you know, meeting everyone and uh receiving further information. I I don't have anything else. Um, so Roxanna, if you have anything further that you need to address?
I I don't think so. I know that we're looking at a date of July twenty fifth. That still remains, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so uh Laura or Rich, you can reach me whenever you've got a minute. We want to make sure that that event date is requested as quickly as possible and the promoter license, so we can at least get moving on those pieces. And we are here to train, answer your questions. Everything we do is is online, so I don't think you're gonna have any problems. We really appreciate uh the meeting. So if we've got no other questions or items that have come up, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It is nine oh three.
Dan, I have that motion to uh adjourn.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have a second?
Christie Halbert, I second.
Christie, thank you. By roll call vote to make sure nothing has been left undone uh for all of our members ready to adjourn. Ben Grove?
You're muted.
Thank you. Uh, Christie Halbert?
Aye.
Dan McRue?
Aye.
Thank you. And Corey Cipola?
Aye.
Thank you. Members and uh Karate Combat team, thank you for joining us. We are adjourned. We will go ahead and stop recording. Thank you to everybody on our team and inspections. Thank you, Jesse.